Good evening. Welcome to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. This is the July monthly board meeting of the Full Concord School Board. Superintendent, since our secretary isn't here today, how would you like to handle this? Do we want?
Oh, we don't have to worry. We have somebody at home that takes the minutes.
We go recording the minutes?
And so between my minutes and.
So we just need to call the role and we don't need to worry about minutes? Okay, excellent. Thank you. The advantages of being on television.
But if you do have a role call vote, you'll need somebody to do that.
To just call the role here, which is fine. We can do that.
Your vice president could do.
I will do that.
Perhaps my vice president could do that. Our vice president is said she would be glad to do the role, so.
With that.
Ms. Walsh, go right away.
Just give me a second. I don't have the cheat sheets. Mr. Weinberg.
Here.
Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Mr. Richards.
Here.
Mr. Crowdo.
Here.
Mr. Cotton.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Meeker.
Here.
And I am here, and Ms. Hastings is not here this evening.
But we do have a quorum, so welcome everyone. First item on the agenda is not on the agenda. It's a meeting greet. Is that correct?
Well, it's a chance to meet some new administrators in the district and, you know, as I have in the past, enjoyed bringing those folks to meet with you. I think, you know, we rely on them around decision making and you often hear about them, so I want them to have you have a face with a name. And so I've asked three folks to come tonight. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask them to come up and sit up front near a microphone and tell them they'll share a little bit about themselves and please feel free to ask any questions. So I'm going to start with Fern Sedden, who is where we'll place her name in nomination tonight as Director for Student and Staff Wellness. So thank you for doing this tonight.
Yeah.
Sure. Just bring the microphone closer so everyone out there can hear you and welcome.
Thank you very much for having me.
Very glad to have you. Does anyone have any questions?
Love to know just a little bit about yourself. If you could introduce yourself to us. I hope you don't mind being put in the hot seat.
Not at all, not at all. It's a pleasure to be here. So Fern Sidon, I have I started out as a school counselor around twenty years ago, and this is going to be my twentieth year. And I worked first in Litchfield for ten years and then in Merrimack for ten years. In the last three years, I have been doing district level work as a director of student wellness there. Prior to that, I worked in community mental health and over the years have developed a great deal of interest in mental health promotion and SEL as a lever for equity and developing those skills that are for, you know, life skills to help students succeed in school, but then, of course, outside of school and the workplace. Yeah.
Very good. Other questions?
I was on the interview committee. We're lucky. She's fantastic. She brings a lot of experience and connections across different groups, you know, in the community, the whole thing of working together.
Jim, I have. Yep, Mr. Crowdo.
So tell us what, once you were through the interview process, you must have been thinking about what am I going to do in my first few days, weeks, months here at Concord School District? Can you share those with us?
Yeah, I am, first of all, very interested in the work that has been done in the last two years, so that I really need to orient myself to the work that's been the groundwork that's been laid. And of course, definitely want to learn all about each of the schools, everything that's being done, get to know people, develop those relationships, and then understand, you know, where my leadership best fits in to help what is happening. I really see a lot of this work is very local, right? Like, so there are big general ideas and principles that we want to work from, but we have to learn what's happening within each school and for the students here and what's needed here. So I'm really looking forward to developing those partnerships with all the different stakeholders and getting to know this community as well, all the different community organizations that support our students and families as well. So there's a lot of that kind of initial relationship building and kind of understanding the the community that I really want to dig into right away. That's, I think, most important to get started, as well as just all the strategic plan and all the things that have been done that we can kind of carry forth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you so much, and I really am looking forward to being in Concord. Yeah, I love it.
So representing a position Assistant Principal at Millbrook in your was a little mistake on your in your agenda. It says Broken Ground, but it's Millbrook. And that's Michael McLeod, and I'm going to ask Michael to come on up and introduce himself, tell us a little bit about himself, and then you certainly.
Hello.
Hi.
Asking questions.
My name is Mike McLeod, starting my twentieth year in education, coming from a business background before that in college and thought I was going to go into business and make millions and found it wasn't for me. So transitioned into education and been there ever since. Started out as a paraprofessional and then went into teaching history at the middle school level and then taught special education and then moved on to the last ten years I've been an evaluation team leader in Waltham, Massachusetts, overseeing compliance for one hundred and forty-two students and twelve special education teachers. Moved to Durham, New Hampshire about four years ago, so was looking to transition into New Hampshire. And after that lovely commute down one twenty-eight is why I was transitioning and starting here in Concord, and I'm looking forward to it.
Questions for Mr. McLeod?
Route four is a lot better than one twenty-eight.
Route four, very scenic.
Yeah, exactly. Might be a parking lot sometimes, but.
Nothing compared to one twenty-eight.
I lived in Waltham for a long, well, a long time, but yeah, so awesome community. Awesome, welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm a bit partial. My kiddos go to Millbrook in Broken Ground. You're going into a really wonderful community. Really happy to have you.
Yes, the administration, Katie's been wonderful, as well as the teachers. So I'm really looking forward to meeting all of them and working and collaborating to do what's best for kids.
Awesome.
I think one of the things that Michael brought to us, too, is the opportunities he's had with diverse populations. And so given the diversity that we have in all areas, right, in Concord, that that was certainly experiences that he brought to us that we were looking forward to and thought he'd be a good fit out in in Millbrook in Broken Ground.
Very good.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to your experience and insights.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Mike. And last, but not certainly not least, Brittany Mahaney. And Brittany, want to join us? Same routine, kind of. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening.
The board will ask questions.
Hi, I'm Brittany Mahaney. First eleven years of my career were in Nashua School District. I started out as a third grade teacher at Amherst Street Elementary School and then transitioned to a fourth grade teacher. From there, I learned a lot about a diverse population. I took on an ELL program with UNH to get better equipped to educate students that were in front of me. And from from that experience, I was ELL certified and then decided to get my CAGS in educational leadership. What I knew then is that I really want to take on a new role, and that was going to Charlotte Ave Elementary School, still within the Nashua School District, as Assistant Principal, where I've been for the last two years. And I wanted to jump to Concord. I was really excited to jump on this opportunity. I'm so fortunate to be a part of a great district.
Thank you.
Thank you. And not to be outdone by Ms. Robinson, I'll tell you that the Beaver Meadow School community is really awesome as well. They're from my zone.
Well, today was the first day of summer school, so I was able to really get acclimated with some of the staff and students. It was really nice to have people back in the building.
Well, Ms. Mahaney, in case you hadn't noticed, that all of our elementary schools are really awesome, and we're all a little partial, but we're really happy to.
I should do the plug first.
I know.
So we're very, you know, as you can see, the board is extremely interested and proud of our each of our schools and look forward to seeing you as the school year progresses.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Brittany, I just want to tell you that even though they show a little partiality to their schools, the rule around here has always been all kids and doesn't matter what district or zone or. Yeah, she's saying don't believe child, but it's true.
CMS all the way.
They are committed to all the kids, and you'll see that as you spend time with us.
I love that mindset, that they're our students, right? They're our kids.
Yes, they're all our students, and we are very proud of each and every one of them. So look forward to to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
It's yours.
Very good. I'll move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. I will bring up one point for discussion, and that is the fact that there may be some people here who want to make public comment on the middle school project, which I have here. So do we want to have their comment before we discuss the middle school project, or do we want to discuss it and have them add their comment? Neither one is correct. I just wanted to know if there was an opinion on the board.
I think it would be helpful to let the public hear the presentation before they comment. I know we're not voting tonight, but I would recommend we move it up before we make it five A.
Five A between recognitions and finance?
Yep.
Does anybody, I mean, then you're making a motion, I assume. The motion was made by Ms. Walsh and seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Any further discussion? Anyone have any issues with that? All right, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes, we'll adjust the agenda to move item ten to right after item five. Does anyone else have any other changes or additions, deletions to the agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Just on the communications and policy agenda, items number eleven, E and F, I'm going to ask that those be removed from discussion this evening. The policies that were posted in the packets were not the most latest and greatest version of the agenda, so we're going to take those off if that's okay.
All right, Mr. Cotton has moved that we remove E and F from tonight's agenda under eleven, communications and policy, and I will second that. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, the agenda is adjusted to remove items eleven, E and F. Are there any other additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Not seeing any hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended previously. Moved by Mr. Cotton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The agenda is approved. With that, we go to the item number four, the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, the regular monthly meeting minutes of June fifth, as well as the Capital Facilities Committee meeting minutes of June seventh. Does anyone have any corrections or changes they would like to see in the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Ms. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. With that, we will move to item five, recognitions and reports. We do not have students, so Superintendent, you get to go first.
Oh, thank you very much. I think I'll start out my report tonight. I'm going to invite Assistant Principal Kylene up with maybe she will work with me on the presentation around the dropout rate. That was a request that you had after our last meeting when you looked at the data on the student enrollment, and there were questions about the dropout. So in your packet, if you go to page nineteen, you'll see a list of all of the students who were part of what we would consider a dropout. And we'll explain each one of them as we go through. Kylene worked on this with me to make sure that we had identified every student and where the student was, where they were located. And and as you hear tonight, there are some students, like youngsters, who take the HICE test. That's considered a dropout. So we have to, you know, unfortunately, we have to include those in the numbers. You can see the exit codes, and so you'll see the W twenty-sevens are the withdrawals, and they, you know, they dropped out. So we'll go through that list and talk to you a little bit, and hopefully you'll have some questions around that. But I'm going to let Kylene introduce the concept, and we'll have a discussion.
So I, thank you. So I'll start just by saying that we have this year, part of our process is the entire school counseling staff, the entire administrative team, and our school registrar get together quarterly to review students who are currently within our power school system as enrolled as Concord High School students but are not taking any classes. And so that becomes our first sort of flag, if you will, to then consider what's going on with those students and why they're not taking classes. I'm also just going to point out that students can stay enrolled as a high school student up until the age of twenty-two. So when you're looking at that sheet in your packet, a student that has a grade level of twelve, it's the last time that they accrued credits or years in the building. All of those twelfth graders were not necessarily class of twenty twenty-three. I need you to think about the fact that some of those students may have been twenty or twenty-one years old, and we, after reaching out to the students several times and sent ten-day letters with no response, made a decision as a team to unenroll, and then, of course, they become a dropout. So when you look at the number of W twenty-sevens and you originally see twelve, just recognize that's not four percent of the class of twenty twenty-three, okay? That the if you I went through the numbers, and actually, I know of at least four of them that were nineteen to twenty-one. So you're looking more at like a two-point-six percent dropout rate of this particular class, if you will. I mean, one is too many. Point blank, one is too many. However, I think sometimes as a board, when you look at that, you might lose sight of the fact that some of these students due to them being identified as special education, they may have enrolled in a couple of classes. We were optimistic they would come back, and then we struggled to get them to fully come back. However, we're reluctant to remove them immediately upon eighteen years old. We're optimistic they'll come back. So sometimes there are students that stay a part of these numbers longer than others. The other piece, another piece that this these numbers don't tell you is that many of these students, when you look at their history, are not necessarily members of the Concord School District from pre-K through twelve. Many of these students moved a lot and were not necessarily as connected to the community, if you will. And just anecdotally, two of these students enrolled over the age of eighteen within the last eighteen months and then never stepped foot in Concord High School. And so one in particular had moved in from the Midwest, enrolled, was eighteen. The student really wanted to complete a diploma and then legitimately never stepped foot back into the building. So there are there are stories with each one of these students. You know, as someone who's been a member of this community for a long time, I've had numerous conversations with these kiddos on here. And the other thing I'll share is that we continue to tell these students that they can come back to complete their adult diploma at any point in time. We're not done with them, even if they're twenty-four, if they're twenty-five. There was a young person who had not quite made it through, who was back in the registrar's office asking for his transcript just the other day, and we welcome them with open arms and get them to come back. So that's just a little bit more information. So those numbers, too, those are DOE codes. And so the Department of Ed codes that we are mandated to use aren't quite where we are post-COVID in trying to communicate how students are completing school, too. So when we look at early exits of adult diploma, that's someone who's met a twenty-credit diploma, but they look like they're exiting early. And so when you look at enrollment numbers from April to May, you may at Concord High School see a drop earlier in the year because they've exited early and are not with the rest of their graduating class, too. So that constitutes another part of that dip you see in your enrollment numbers for Concord High School at the end of the school year. Several of them finished up in May and then exited out as completing the adult diploma program. I'll stop there. That was a lot of information.
For the sake of those people on the board that may not know, anyone home, could you tell me what HICET, graduated HICET?
Yes, it is the high school equivalency set of exams. Some people might have known it as the GED, and actually, the state of New Hampshire is going back to the GED this year. But the HICET was also a high school equivalency set of exams that we offer for students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Two of those students, too, that do have to be coded as dropout, and this is another example of like the codes not quite matching where we are in education, are students who transferred to Job Corps in Manchester and will receive a high school equivalency, if not if not more, and also be trained in a trade. And that is still coded as a dropout. And so in two of our numbers, that is what they insist that we code them as, so.
Questions? Go ahead.
When we say they did not respond to the ten-day letter, are these all students under eighteen?
All over.
They're all over eighteen?
We would never send a ten-day letter to anybody under the age of eighteen. Yeah, they are all between eighteen and twenty-two. And we're reluctant to send at eighteen, truthfully. You know, we or we'll send, and then we'll send again, and then we'll send our social worker, and then we'll send a school counselor, and then the administrators will call the parents, and then, you know, so we will do a lot even between the ages of eighteen and twenty. And that's why, too, I think the number we're still, cleaning up is not a pretty term, but we're still holding on to some students that we started losing during COVID when we were remote and were optimistic maybe would come back. You know, it's getting better, but some of these students that looked at their profile, when you started looking at their log entries, we started commenting on lack of attendance in the nineteen-twenty school year.
Other questions?
I don't have a question. I just, as a board member, when I look at these kind of numbers a month ago, and I'm sort of aghast, and it's very refreshing to know how much you know about what's going on here. That that these kids are just not a number that didn't show up one day and they got a certain status in your in your registrar book.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank your staff for that.
Yeah, and I wish I could, I, you know, I can't, but for confidentiality reasons, but to share how the quarterly meetings go with the school counselors and hearing the school counselors and the administrators talk about, I've talked to the mom, and I know where, you know, I know what their story is, and I know what's going on, and they know they can come back, and, you know, it's just, for whatever reason, it's not a priority right now for them. There's some other things that are. But they do come back. And like I said, you know, just last week, there was a younger adult that came back in and was looking forward to finishing up, so.
Thank you. A couple of things that resulted from this. One is is that Kylene and I talked with Tim and his team about how I can better have that information so that when we have that discussion at the board, we don't have to wait for another month for you to get the information. Some of it I knew, but, you know, I think that the detail is really with the administrators at the high school. So but we are now going, they will be, after their quarterly meetings, they will be reporting the results to my office so that I'm more aware of that. The second question that came up, too, that I thought, I'm not sure who brought it up, but Pam, you might have brought it up. What is it that we're doing? What kinds of aggressive responses are we making as a school district to make sure that we just don't have a youngster who didn't show up, and that's the end of it, as Jim described, but that the school is making an effort? So I think Kylene outlined that a little bit. With social workers are they're terrific about making those house calls and reaching out to the parents as the administrators do. I know that Michael did that when he was principal, and I know that Tim's done that. So we're not letting these kids slip out of our hands without a without a good fight to keep them in school.
It's pretty evident with that report. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you, Kylene.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we had a quick, I wanted to give you a quick update on equity. We had a final meeting at the end of the year, and I just wanted to give you a little progress note, I think. Are you going to do that, Boris? Well, go ahead. Go ahead, let me give you the mic.
So we had a really lovely meeting. What was really particularly interesting about this is we have a set of students who are on the committee, the Equity Committee, and two girls in particular from the high school showed up and they said, we would like to do a little bit of an opening for us. And they sort of took over the meeting, which was really fun. They asked us to all get into a circle and they practiced restorative justice at the high school and they had spoken to Tim and had asked if we could, if they could just use that model that they have, that they'd like to see used in advisory at the high school, essentially going around with various prompts, questions and prompts and doing some listening in a circle. But I really felt, and you were there too, Sarah and Cara, that you might want to comment, but it was a really lovely start to the meeting. We also had people from New Hampshire listens at the meeting to help facilitate some further discussion. We looked, we reviewed our sort of value statements or norms, went through a process of looking at that. Got ourselves really as a committee, very settled into a very great place where we can just continue to do this work going forward with some nice groundwork that's been done and some relationship building, some, I would say some trust building too. So it was very favorable and unfortunately, one of them is, is a senior, so she's graduating and she was very, very active. Actually, there were three girls there. Yeah. Pardon me?
Others are sophors.
Okay, so we have two sophors that we're gonna retain on this committee and we look forward to the work going forward.
Thank you. The only other piece around equity that I'd like to share is that, again, the city has approached us, are very interested in working together. As you know, they have a, an effort underway around their equity and diversity inclusion programs in their, in the city. And so they've reached out to us to want to do some work together in a joint way. And I think it's ideal. I think the issues around equity, diversity, inclusion, it's about, it's about all of us. It's about the community and the schools working together. And so I just want to kind of give you an update on that. Both Tom Asbell, the, the city manager, as well as Mayor Boulay have indicated an interest in working together and perhaps even having our advisories work together at times throughout the year. So I'm looking forward to developing that plan with them and appreciate any kind of input that, that you'll have as we go forward. I'll keep you abreast of what's happening with them. So any, everybody okay with that? I'm just looking around checking. Okay, all right, good. The, the other piece of information that the board asked for was a kind of a preliminary update on summer school, what, what programs are out there and numbers of students participating. So I asked John if John would do a quick report to you tonight. And it really, I think we have a, a report in your packet if you want to follow along. But I'm gonna let John update you on summer school.
Thank you very much. Well, I, on page 22 and 23 of your packet, I did a little overview of each program for you and kind of the numbers of what each one of those are. I think we start with our extended school year. It's ESY and that's our individual special education services. They're for students that receive their, either the therapies or individual instruction. You can see by the numbers that, that we have about 202 students across the district that participate in this. And these are students who determined by IDEA that allow, that we have to, and this is by law, that they're students who are either possibly showing regression in their skills over the summer or students who need to have further instruction on their goals moving forward. All these students who attend this are decided by a team, including the parents, and it's a pretty healthy program and started today and a lot of, a lot of good opportunities to really meet kids in a very relaxed environment. It runs each day from 8 to noon. It's four by four by four, so it's four days a week, four hours a day for four weeks. And that's how we, we run our ESY program and it's a really nice opportunity again for kids to make some of, some growth in their individual needs. Our Title I Summer Program, we have a total of 362 students that are in this program and you'll see it by numbers by each school. This is available to all of our Title I schools for our rising K to 8 students. And each school has a designated coordinator who works on setting up the classrooms, works with the administration to help with transportation and, and room assignments. It's available, you know, in all of our schools. Each school has a Title I Summer Program this summer. There is a Title I school, so that's really K through 8 here in Concord. And they, again, each day, we also have a partnership with the Community Action Program and that allows us for lunch and breakfast for all of our students in these programs each day also.
For the program before, what does the other column signify?
The other, that's a different, different specialized program.
Different specialized program.
Yeah, so it's all of our students there and then students, some students are in our program for emotionally and behaviorally challenged students. So we have three.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is it advanced?
Same thing. It's like, it's, yeah, it's just the name of it for our high school program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then ELL, our English Second Language Learners. We have a program both over at Broken Ground and at the Middle High School. We have two programs that we established. These are for our students who are emerging in language. It really is, this helps them with their listening and their speaking and, and writing in the English language. And we run this at two different locations. The high school one varies a little bit where we give them an opportunity to have some exposure to things they may not have. We go on some field trips with them. We do more of a community-based program where they, they meet and they learn about different cultural things here in Concord and throughout our area. And they go, they work together with our ELL social worker and we have a teacher who is both English, English certified and ELL certified and they work, they work together in doing that. And then our Entering K program is for our elementary students who, I mean, for our students coming into K who work with a, with a coordinator and really work with the families to help them prepare themselves and get them ready to come to school and enter a full-day program. And we do a screener in all of our buildings. We use a screener called the Dial. And the Dial just talks about kind of all domains of life and what students need to grow. And based on that screener, we move forward and invite some kids in to work for sometimes a week or more, depending on the school. And this is highly done by the school teams and they decide what's appropriate for their school and what students they feel they need to get a little closer look at. And again, we provide them lunch and breakfast when they're there. And there is 87 students that will be attending our Entering K program this year. So of all the programs, there's 700 students there. In addition to these programs you see that are run through Student Services, we also have at the high school a credit recovery program that, that happens, which I think is, and then our freshman orientation. And those are going on as we speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Cretto.
So John, as I was looking through this earlier, the two things that jumped out were the numbers for Broken Ground School and Runlet Middle School. The Runlet Middle School in terms of their total number of 800 or so kids and only 17 participating compared to the other elementary schools. Any thoughts on, on that or?
So again, thoughts on it are, are one that I think that it's a team decision and the family and the family has to be engaged in it. And they have to be willing to send them and want to send them and kids have other opportunities. You know, they get older and a lot of them, you know, what this is, is when the older you get too, it kind of, although you say there's more students, for this qualification, they have to show a criteria. And that team has to, they go through a deliberation form to look at that criteria. And the older, this, this is a lot of kids who, who have more specialized needs and disabilities is really what it is. So it's a more targeted group and population that, that the, the team felt qualified in presentation to the parents and the parents willing to send it. Having been a former middle school administrator, I'll tell you that a lot of parents don't want to send kids over the summer.
Well, I was thinking that same thing and I'm happy to hear you say that. That certainly rings.
But it's offered, it's part of our team process. It's considered in every single IEP meeting throughout the year. It is a criteria that we mention it and talk about it and make a determination. And often the parents just will say, no, thank you, or, or the team doesn't feel it's presented and they don't bring it forward because they don't feel there will be regression or a lack of skill built throughout the year. So they don't meet the criteria at that point, so that's why.
All right, thank you, John.
Ms. Walsh and then Mr. Cotton.
I had a couple of questions. So Mr. Cotton, if you wanted to.
I just, I had one and that was on the ES, ELL program where they're, it's only offered at, at Broken Ground.
So we bring students throughout the district that qualify that, that we do the WEDA assessment and we look at kids who are below a three on their assessment and basically those kids are really low in language emergence and it means that.
So the kids who aren't up in that area, are they bused up there?
If, if need be, yeah, if need be. Most of the students, so if we have a student, it's been a tradition in Concord that if we have a student that, that moves in past third grade and typically really has really low, they're a one or two, they're really low in their language emergency. They have no ability to communicate in the English language whatsoever and can't function in a classroom in doing that. We have a, a higher ratio of staffing over at Broken Ground, so we've typically had kids go over there for a year or two until they, they improve in their skill base and then back in their community school. Our goal is always a community school, but sometimes we have to get specialized when the specialized needs there. And they would apply, like any student that transferred buildings, they would apply to the superintendent to ask for that transfer in some way and we would, we would accommodate that and bus kids if we needed to. And that's why, that's why the majority of the population is already there. But we do have kids that are in this part of town that we are busing and doing that right now.
Thanks.
How many students do we offer the opportunity to go to Title I program versus how many are enrolled?
So it's a large number. So basically it's done that criteria by most need. So we look at, we look at their, their assessment scores, multiple assessment scores, and we look at, we look at what needs and we kind of order based on need.
I'm just trying to understand what percentage of students accept going to the Titles One.
A high, a very high, a very, very, very high percentage. I think we have, you know, I'll give you a rough, usually about 10 noes per building, I guess, is the best way I can give you the most raw data I have. I guess my street data would say that when I look at the list, it says that there's a few noes on there. The majority of the kids we're inviting, there's been conversation all year over their progress. So, so I think that when they're invited, it's, it's done first by, by hand invitation. If we don't get a response, there's phone calls by the reading specialists and the principals. We do a lot. This is a pretty healthy program and we try to bring as many as we can. And sometimes, I'll be honest with you, we have to look at, we have to look at staffing needs too. We have to make sure we can keep low numbers, low ratios. I think I said eight to one this year was kind of where I tried to stay and say like, can we stay around there to service our kids and where kids need to be? Because groups get too big, it doesn't, it doesn't, we have to have enough capacity to do both. And I don't, we're not turning kids away, I think is the thing.
And mine is more our kids turning us down at high numbers and we, we need to do it different.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't see that based on the data I have.
Good. My other question was about the pre-K program. You said every elementary sort of just makes its own criteria and runs its own program.
No, I, I, not their own criteria. We use the Dial assessment to do our thing. They, based on how long they run it, it's based on the culture. Some, some run it longer, some run it two weeks, some run it one week.
So have we evaluated which is more effective for the students and should we do that? Because that's great, but is it unfair that some students get a two-week program and some get a one-week program based on what the school's culture or tradition is?
Hold on, hold on. I, I reached out to the elementary schools and I know that they're all doing the same four, four days this year in August, the same, the same chunk of, but however, I would, I know that we have an elementary principal here and I'm not sure if I can reach, just to do a shot across, because my understanding was that you didn't turn anybody away.
For our incoming kindergarten program? No, we didn't, not turn. I think we are close to 25 kiddos that are coming at this point.
I just, when you're, you know, are we looking at something like this and saying, is four days effective? Is two weeks, you know, what, what is, how are we evaluating an investment like this? And determining what is, works best for students and helps them get the best start?
I think that that's something that I could look into for you.
Okay, thank you.
It's an excellent question. I don't know, I, we'd have to do a lot of talking about the evaluation of that based on, you know, readiness for school is a lot of variables.
Yes.
And I think that, that I would want to be careful not to limit our variables to say that's effective and not effective on, on students' long-term success. So I think it's something we can certainly talk about and look into. I'd be curious what research says about it. I just didn't dig that much into it, but I'd be curious about that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate all the insight and all the information. You may.
Thank you. So next, we wanted to update you on, all I wanted to be able to share is some of the work that's being done in response to the Memorial Field Project. And Matt sort of took, took the lead on this in working with the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city. So I'm gonna pass it over to Matt and let him update you on the project.
Thanks, Kathleen. So we've been working with the city, as you know, had some correspondence last week and today with David Gill, the Parks and Rec Director. They're hoping by the end of this month, they'll have a signed contract with VHB Civil Engineers who are out of Bedford. They've done a lot of work with the city. They wanna, we want to look at four parts to a study that we would engage with them in. One would be the existing conditions analysis. A lot of us know what the existing conditions, but we need a professional survey on that. A geotechnical survey of the field, know what's underneath the soils and if, water, yeah, there sure is. Which leads me to the next part of the study, which is a stormwater analysis. Those are three big parts, but I think one thing that people should know is a big part of this whole master planning project is we're gonna have public engagement. So one of the timeframes that we're looking at is after school gets in, but sometime in early mid-September, to actually have VHB, have our team members, which would be myself, Kathleen, Jack, Steve Mello. And I know that the city manager is gonna be working with Kathleen to help develop that core team. But we would get together, we would meet with VHB initially, right around the time of the contract and then we would start to talk about the scope of work that we would be looking for them to do. But again, a big part of this is to have that community engagement. And then this report that we would look at, at the end of this study would be to include schematic design, a cost estimate and construction details, including schedule and what that would look like and placement of, you know, if we take Memorial Field offline, obviously that affects our sports schedules and city. So all of that information and stuff that we're gonna be looking at as part of this study.
Questions for Mr. Cashin?
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
There are still ducks in the puddles when it rains.
More, more ducks.
The track camp becomes swim camp. It's not unfun. It's just wet.
So I only have a couple, couple of quick things and then you move on. I'm gonna ask Kim to pass this around, but I just wanted to alert you to, can I have one please? Just so I can keep one, thanks. We got it, I know you got received an invitation from FISTO regarding the Keach Park event and they're going to, celebrating the, the fact that there's going to be lighting out at Keach Park and they've been working on this for quite a while. So I alert you to Saturday, July 22nd. It's in the afternoon, but they have all kinds of things planned. It's real, it's a, it's a nice family event and I know that they'll have different, they'll have food, they'll have entertainment, but just generally a celebration because they have been working hard to get lights out at Keach Park so that they can have night activities, especially I guess in soccer. That's their big, that's their big play. So do you play soccer over there?
I was there the other night.
There you go. So I just wanted to remind you all that that's a So, I just wanted to remind you all that that's available. The second notice that I, I'm gonna, and these came in kind of late, so that's why they weren't in your packet. But the second notice that I'm passing around is a notice we just received from, from the Department of Ed, particularly from the Office of Nutrition Programs and Services. And what it does is it lays out the allocations that each one of our elementary schools received relative to the fruits and vegetables program, and the allocations that our program will have at each school in order to have those products available for our students. So, it's all around fresh fruits and vegetables, and if you've been in the cafeteria, you know, and in classrooms by, you can, you can go into classrooms and teachers will have a basket of fruit, things for the youngsters to have. I noticed that when I'm visiting the cafeteria, you'll often see cups of vegetables, you know, cut-up carrots and all of that, that's all part of this program, and the funding for that comes from this, and the allocations are outlined in this sheet that I gave you. So, thought you might want to be interested in that. They pretty much assign it to us, but our, Donna Reynolds, our Director for Food Services, takes and is very active in, in participating in this program. So I thought I'd keep you abreast of what's happening there. Other than that, sir, I'm done. Is anything else you'd like to ask, any questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Just, just one quick question on this thing you just gave to the, to us. Do you know what, how they arrive at the dollar numbers, I mean, is it based on the number of students in the school?
It's based on the number of students, and certainly our free and reduced numbers always play into all of these grants. That's why, you know, when we talk about filling out applications, when we say that to families, it impacts so many pieces of our work, whether it's the federal entitlements. John just talked about IDEA and Title I, those are all based on free and reduced numbers as well as this program, Bob, and the allocations that we get.
And then, if I could, I just want to follow up on that. It says in the handout you just gave us that there's a minimum of two days per week for, is, is that what we normally do? Two days, and is that more or less than we have done in the past?
Well, I mean, the, it, it's a minimum of two days, but if you go into any of our cafeterias, you'll see that fruit and vegetables out all the time for the kids to just take baskets of apples, oranges, depending on the season, you'll see that avail. And they often put out different kinds of vegetables too, that maybe the kids aren't so accustomed to, but wanting them to try it, so.
Yes, I was told once about the experience of a kiwi. Student with a kiwi, they were very excited about it, they thought that was a cool brand.
And you know, they're dependent too on the surplus foods that they receive from the federal government and the allocations, and they often send different types of foods. So, you know, the, the cooks are always figuring out how they can use about five different types of beans and what they can put that in and how they can use it. Because those are, those are allocations for us that are free to help us with our food program.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you, and are there similar programs administered at the middle school and high school?
No, but I don't want you to think that those same products, I mean, they have a lot of things out for kids at, at the middle school and the high school. Probably not as great of usage at the older grades, they're looking for other product, but it is available to them.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to a discussion of the middle school project. Superintendent, who will lead this?
Well, we were, you really just put it on the agenda for a discussion. I think there's been a lot of, a lot of, a lot of dialogue, articulation, suspect, what's going on? And you know where we stand with the state money, you know that, we're fourth on the list. We, there won't be any allocation for us this year. However, we have been promised that we would be on number one on the list at the next budget, allocations that are done in the next biennium. So, we anticipate being the, the first to receive money. Unless there's an absolute event in another school district that would put us not in first place. If somebody had a disaster, right, we, they may, of course, would bump us. But, so that, that's really at, put to bed for the moment. But we are, as you know, looking at the sites. The Runlet site is still the default site, it's always been that for you. You also own land out in, on the east side, and so we are looking at that as a, you know, because that's land you own, and so we're looking at that. I think the public, honestly, is interested in knowing where we're at, and so I think we put this on the agenda tonight to have a discussion with you. What do you see as next steps? What would you like to do? I know there's been some talk about a public hearing, a, a time when we can just come to the public and let them know where we're at and what's happening with the project, certainly on everybody's mind. So, I don't have a formal presentation tonight, because there wasn't really any direction other than what we're doing right now.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
For the superintendent or Mr. Cashman, my understanding is that the architectural firm is looking at options or note for the Broken Ground site.
That is correct.
So that, so when would we expect what that would look like? And those options include different entrances to the site than we currently use for Millbrook and Broken Ground, right?
Correct. You know, they, that has to be determined, and, and then we need to engage in some studies, very similar to what we talked about with what we're having, what the city and the schools have in VHB, that would be civil engineering studies, so we need to, would need to look into the soil samples, the groundwater, any other deed restrictions and that sort of thing. So, based on the discussions that we have, we would look at, we would want to have a determination by the end of September on a location for where we're going. So, as Superintendent Murphy had mentioned, the 144 South Street is the default site, so it's something that we have been working on. But again, questions have come up about the discussion of the land that we own, and so that's why I think we wanted to leave tonight open-ended to hear from yourselves and the public.
Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
It is fair to say though, Matt, that we have hired an architect.
That is correct. HMFH architect.
HMFH, and we have engaged a civil engineer to do groundwork.
Novice engineering.
Actually, at both sites, I think.
That is correct.
Novice engineering, so, and, and we expect to have some results prior to September from that work.
That is correct. We would look at site survey, geotechnical services, that sort of thing, just to evaluate the properties and make sure.
So, with that in mind, and knowing that we really need to have some decisions made by, by the end of September, I, I think that you, you need, my recommendation to you is, is that we hold a hearing and, and lay out all the, the pluses and minuses for each site and what you're thinking about it, and we'll have all the evidence that we need based on just preliminary. You know, you can't get into all of the exact detail, because, you know, that's, when you're talking about engineering work, you're talking about a lot of expensive work that needs to be done. So, we haven't gone that far, but just looking at things as Pam described, the entrance, where's the entrance? Where would it be? How would we do that? What's the viability of the property and all of that? So, we'll have that all done for you. And, and I would strongly urge that we hold a hearing, that you hold a hearing, and, and we, you know, notify the public so that they have an opportunity to share their thinking with us relative to this project. Because I, I think the architect, the architect and engineers really need to get information by the end of September so they can get ready to do things like cite the school and prepare any additional documents. We'll have to amend, we may have to amend our plan that we sent to the state. We do not have to apply again, we can use the same application, which was very well done. And just make any amendments to it based on any final decisions you make. So, I, I'm urging you to do that. I think it's time, people are curious about where we're at.
I don't think anybody in the board would disagree with you and will, you know, engage in that. Mr. Cashman, can I ask you just to describe the, the Broken Ground site? Most people are familiar with Millbrook and Broken Ground School. How much additional land over and above that area? So, in other words, how far back does that go and how much land is?
It's about 56, 54, 56 acres. There's, it's, it's laid out, we can, we'll bring that back. We've had previous meetings where we've shown the actual layout and the boundary lines. The, the 51 South Curtisville Road is obviously Broken Ground. 53 is the Millbrook site, we physically attach those two schools, as you know. 55 South Curtisville is our maintenance shed, originally way back. We had talked about that as being a wood chip plant, but we abandoned that idea back in 2010. But that is the property right on South Curtisville Road. North, North Curtisville Road is a property kind of to the northeast of the Broken Ground site, and it's wooded area and a lot of land back there.
Go ahead, other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
Matt, I don't know if I missed something along the way, but at one point, we were talking about whether or not we could use all of that property or only part of it or none of it. Where are we with that whole?
We're, we're working on trying to identify that and get some specificity. There was some discussion with my predecessor over the winter time that some of that land that was deeded to the National Park Service was, was signed over in the, I want to say, I think it was in 1999, and so we've been working with the city and with the National Park Service to get that clarified. And once we get that, then we'll be able to, you know.
So, just to follow up on that, as it stands right now, is that a possible Plan B? If, if we decide the Runlet site is not the site we want?
Well, it's a possible-
More than a possible, I guess.
Well, but again, remember, we've got to really investigate that site. We need to do that Phase One civil engineering study. So, provided all of those, the facts come back that it's a buildable site, the infrastructure on the street has to be looked at, traffic study, there's a, there's a, there's a large portion of it, but it definitely is a possibility, we own, we own that property.
You know, that property was always designated as a school site. When we went back and looked at the history, you must know that.
I do know that.
And, and so, it becomes a site that you, you can't turn your back on it. It's a piece of property that the district owns, you know, that has, as Matt described, 57 acres that we'll have to determine whether, how much of that is usable, are there wetlands, you know, are there things that would, you know? But I think it is an alternative for you to look at and discuss with, with, with your public and, and make some decisions about the appropriate site.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Walsh.
I just wanted to corroborate Tom's sort of question of is that a viable site? Because in my mind, we sort of were at a spot where it was still questionable whether it was a buildable site or not, just from a deed standpoint. So I, I agree with your question, I wasn't really sure.
Well, you know, as you know, we've pursued that through the National Parks and Recreation, and we are awaiting a letter, Jack's been working with them to get the communication. But from all of the data that we gathered and some of the records that were reviewed, all of the work was done to take, remove any caveats on that property that were designated as parks, National Parks and Recreation property only.
Right, but we still don't have that final piece.
We do not have that final letter. And we, and we are hoping that we can get that soon. We've been working with them for, for quite a while now, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I just wanted to make sure that I think we should have a public hearing in September when people are back, so that we're not doing it while people are on vacation.
Right.
But I also think it would be really important, and I don't know if the architects are available for the next board meeting, or when they will have their work done so that we can have similar to what we had for the-
Clinton Street.
Thank you, Clinton Street. I wanted to say Center Street, and that's not right, but, project, so that people could see what they're thinking about as an early thing.
I think, I think we probably could. August 2nd is the next Capital Facilities Committee meeting.
Right, and that, but we do have, we do have Amy Clark coming too, remember, from the state. So she's going to kind of lay out all the issues around the state building aid. So, we do have her coming too, to the board. When you say that, and I'm trying to, I'm formulating in my mind what you want, would that be part of the hearing, or would you want a separate meeting and then the hearing?
I, I think, I would like not to see it for the first time at the public hearing. Is where I'm coming at, and I would like the public to have an opportunity to digest it and then have the presentation done again at the public hearing, which is, I think, what we did the last time.
Great, that's perfect. We'll, we'll check, we'll work with our architects and put something together for August for the board, and then prepare a public hearing for the community in September. Okay, great.
Other questions?
And that'll give us a chance too, by the way, to put together our materials. I mean, you know, you want to be able to have effective materials that kind of capture what we're trying to do. So, that'll give us time to put that together.
Go ahead, Ms. Meeker.
So, my question is just to reiterate your statement before. You were saying that, that by the end of September, we should have a decision. So, we have August for our board meeting, we have a September public hearing, and then we're being asked to make a decision as a board as early as late September. So I feel like the timeline is tight. And so, I'm re, I'm just really hoping that the materials that are presented in August and September are cohesive, that are well explained to members of the public who are just hearing a lot of these conversations for the first time. Like, we've been having a lot of these conversations, you know, as they drip through, like with the park service and the deed, and how does it work here? And I mean, it's a lot of conversations, a lot of complicated stuff. And so, once we bring the public in, I really want to make sure that they fully understand the picture that we're painting for them, so that if we're being, if, if we really are going to get to a decision by the end of September, that it feels cohesive, that we, that people know that we have been talking about this stuff for some time, that it's not just being dropped on our plates, and that the firm is comfortable with where we're at, that, you know. So I just don't want people to feel like we just crammed this through at the last minute.
Mr. Cotton and then Ms. Walsh.
To Kara's point, the last time we discussed this on Clinton Street, we had more than one public presentation. I think we need to do that again, you know, to ensure that people who can't get there physically can get there on Zoom perhaps, and to ensure that people in different parts of town and at different times of day can have an opportunity to participate. So, I agree that the timeline is very tight. We discussed the calendar tonight, we might want to start thinking about that as we look ahead.
Ms. Walsh.
Just to clarify with Mr. Cashman, what you're looking for by the end of September is sort of a, I mean, we could say this is the property we're most interested in, and then, but that's just starts the process of doing soil sample and other things, and we could still end up not being able to use that property, or?
No, I think, I think what we discussed just a few minutes ago is that we are having some of that work just preliminary looked at. We own the property, we need to investigate it a little bit more so that as we have those presentations and we work more with the architects and the engineers, we can bring forward that information and know about it by that time.
I guess, I had a question of why, like, so we were in a, this is a much different timeline than we were pursuing when we were looking at the Clinton Street property, like a much shorter timeline for us, but a much longer timeline on the other end. And it feels like we're in a different, I mean, we've gotten our application done, we submitted it without, you know, with two potential locations, and I understand we have to amend that. But I guess the question of why do we need to make a final decision by Septem-, you know, September? I haven't gotten a, I, I'm not quite sure I understand why. I haven't gotten a, I'm not quite sure I understand why.
Okay. Well, we've, when we hired the architects, we laid out for the next biennium a whole entire schedule of action points that would have to happen so that if we forecasted forward, we would be looking at August of twenty twenty-seven to open up if we follow the next biennium. So being number four and then number one on the next biennium for that building aid, you have to backtrack a little bit to see what actions need to happen. So there were prior discussions with the folks about that property that we already own. So we tried to look at when the next biennium starts and, and when we would have to do this investigation on the property. So, I mean, it's just, we, we want to investigate it further because that's what we've talked about. We don't know all the results yet, but we do own the property and it's a healthy question that people have had to say, well, why aren't you looking at that property?
But is this end of September to continue the investigation or to decide on the final location of the middle school is the question, I think.
I really think to, to have a determination so that we can then start our schematic design and know where we're going to be. Are we going to be at Runlet Middle School location or are we going to be at this location? So that, that needs to happen because you have to start designing and doing all the cost estimate work. But it's, you know, very much based on where you're going to build.
But we had done that under, we were doing that, I don't remember when our last Clinton Street timeline was, but we were doing that with the assumption, hope that we might get for this biennium and we weren't working two years, eighteen, twenty-one months ahead of the state fiscal year starting. So do we, I, I guess the question is, can you come up with a timeline that gives the community a little more time to think and digest? Like puts us into October or November?
Good to say, because is, is the end of September a want or a need is what she's basically coming down to? And it sounds like it's a want and we may need to give more time.
And so what we'll do is we'll send you a timeline too. We'll send you a list of all of the events that need to happen and why they pushed hard on the September thirtieth. That was really around doing all of the design work, the schematic, all the utilities, what would it cost to bring utilities in, all of that. And that's why they felt like it was going to take time. So, but we'll go back to them and check with them. And I will send you the list of activities that we, all the activities that need to be done. Because you, you need to clear a picture of that.
Both sites, I think, would be important, yes. Mr. Cotton.
I was just going to suggest that maybe at our next Capital Facilities or Finance or both meetings, we could kind of go over that timeline a little bit and have a discussion as to what's one of and what has to.
Mr. Cashman and Superintendent, does that seem like a reasonable request?
Sure.
I think that would be good.
It's great.
I'm going to just throw out there for the sake of the public, just asking, Mr. Cashman, do you have like a third site or another secret site? Or is there a, is there? Because I know for the sake of the community, we have looked at over a dozen sites in the course of the last, you know, many months. And we have considered virtually every site that is bigger than the footprint of a school and, and fields for that type of a thing. So at this point right now, you're talking to us about two sites and for the sake of our community, I'd like to just ask, is that a reasonable thing or is there a, you know, possible other side? I know we're open to everything, but.
Those are the two sites.
Okay, thank you.
South Street and then that broken ground.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear, so, you know, people ask those questions because they're, you know, it's come up. We've looked at the two sites that we're talking about. We've looked at them for many years.
Since twenty seventeen.
Yes, so.
Now, we get, we get questions about is there a site downtown? And, you know, you could drive around downtown. Yeah, I mean, there just isn't a lot of property that's available, the site of school.
Yeah. Mr. Croto, did you have a question?
I, I do. So, Mr. Cashman, can you just weigh in on the very basics of fifty-some-odd acres versus the, how many acres do we have at Runlet Middle School right now?
Twenty-point-oh-eight.
Okay.
Twenty-one.
And not that that's going to play into a big favor for either side, but it certainly has, certainly has some advantages for the way new middle schools are built nowadays. Can you just kind of talk about that?
Well, you know that there's.
People have something to mull over for the next couple of weeks.
Sure. You know that there's no shortage of field space in the city. So I think having more acreage, more developed acreage, if the engineering studies come back and verify that, yes, the soils are fine, you can, you can build on it, it gives a lot more options. The work at Memorial Field would continue. But, you know, we talked about equity earlier. You'd have both sides of the river where you would have field space, place space, community space because there's schools. You have, it would be the new middle school and Broken Ground and Millbrook right there at the same.
One of the things that came up really is an important part of a middle school was the outdoor education classrooms. And certainly that site affords us that opportunity, given its, its location. And so there were some features that we, that the focus groups back in two thousand and seventeen established as, as wants, wants for their middle school. And so that site would, would, it would, it would make it more available for the students.
And it would certainly provide that, and we all know that we don't want middle schoolers traveling away from campus to go to a practice or, or a game as much as we can possibly not have it.
Keep them with you close.
Kind of keep them close.
I get that.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I would just add to that. I mean, I think one of the reasons we were looking at the Center Street property is that it's twenty acres at Runlet, but there's already a school on Runlet where there's fifty-seven acres with nothing, no other buildings on it. The Runlet site is, I think we all know, we will be in people's backyards. And one of my concerns has always been the disruption to students, especially this cohort of students who have had their educations disrupted so much already.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
One more, just for Mr. Cashman. Can you discuss the process of HMFH being retained as the architect? Because I know folks might have seen them for the past few years and said, did the district reevaluate? What was the process? So how did we land on them?
Sure. We went out with RFQ, Request for Qualifications. In November of twenty-two, we solicited, you know, all across nationally. We got three firms, HMFH, one of them, La Valley Brenzinger, HL Turner, right here in town. We had bid walkthroughs, so we, we came and had the firm show up and we toured the school, gave them plenty of information. We had open questions and answered everything via emails back. We then had one, one of the firms, HL Turner, dropped out when it was time to submit qualifications. When the qualifications packages came in, we had an evaluation team. We then conducted interviews and then we, in this room, and we had a process of Q and A with the interviews. And then we talked it through and we had it brought forward. That committee brought forward a recommendation to the, I believe it was in May, to the Capital Facilities Committee meeting. And then we, that was in April, sorry, the end of April and then the very beginning of May. We had the board meeting where that was voted on. Sorry.
I will just add that, there were two members, this is just for the public, two members of the school board were on that evaluation committee, Kara and I, and also a member of the public was invited to be on that.
That's correct.
Other questions? All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Cashman. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, because that really helps us in terms of preparing and we really wanted to establish what you wanted to do, what your timeline was for all of this. So that was very helpful. Thank you.
And to the board, we will discuss a calendar later in this meeting and feel free to bring up any of your thoughts at that point. Anything else with regards to middle school? Then I'll move on to finance and then after the finance report, we will be in a public comment from anyone who wishes to make a comment on anything relative to the district. So finance, Ms. Walsh.
Finance met on June twenty-sixth. We had two main topics of conversation. One was the school lunch program, including student debt, but also a proposal will be coming forward to increase elementary and middle school lunches by twenty-five cents. This is based on federal regulations around equity between what the free and reduced lunch program is valued at versus the charge for the full pay lunch. I don't know when that will be. Mr. Dunn didn't give us a date.
I was just going to him right now, so I missed what you said, so.
Just the free and reduced lunch. We will be getting a proposal at some point to increase lunch. The second is somewhat related to that. The administration is working on plans to replace the HVAC systems at Beaver Meadow and Broken Ground, that the systems will be similar to the ones at the new schools that do humidify the air. And they presented a plan to replace four of the sixteen air exchanges?
Five of the sixteen.
Five of the sixteen at the high school. The committee has, that would deal with the ones that break down the most and cost us the most in repairs, but it would not allow us to turn on the dehumidified air until all of the, where, all of the systems were replaced, according to the presentation. And we have asked that they go back and come up with a plan that would replace the high school at once in twenty twenty-five as opposed to doing it over a number of years. We, the finance committee asked that we look at that, they look at the costs that we're spending on maintaining the current system as well as what the cost of the catastrophic failure would be. There is quite a lead time for these systems too. So, you know, we might find ourselves in a real trouble if the whole system fails. Mr. Dunn is working on bonding options for that and for all of these programs together. So that is where we are and I think that's why Mr. Dunn is going to join us by June.
Well, he's on, I'm, I'm, I see, I don't see him, so I'm, I'm a little nervous right now. He's on. Here he is.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain, as I've said before.
Yeah, I don't have him up on the screen. Jeff, can you outline for the board a little bit about the work that you've been doing around the bonding and the intent to bond relative to these HVAC systems, please?
Yep, and a little bit of a follow-up to what I think I heard Ms. Walsh say. What we were trying to do is step this in so that when we do bond for the middle school, there isn't a big impact and also try to separate what work needs to be done. Because again, these systems are going to be twenty-five, thirty years and have little breaks in between for the taxpayers. So in listening to the finance committee, what we've tried to do, which is a resolution you'll see tonight, is to take steps to do that. As I mentioned at that meeting, I did not want to impact Beaver Meadow getting sacrificed because of the high school bigger project. So the, the, the motion tonight that you see in the board packet is to authorize us to spend five million now, reimburse from the bond that we would do, whether it be the big bond to take care of the high school as well or just the smaller units. But we, these HVAC systems at all the schools, I'm sorry, at the Beaver Meadow, Broken Ground, which has now been taken care of, that's all done through ESSER, and the high school are thirty-plus years old. And Matt has struggled for quite a while, mostly the last three years. COVID has exacerbated it significantly. And for those that work in those schools, they understand what that environment is like. But we've seen it in the bills these last two years because that equipment that's thirty-plus years old has been running twenty-four-plus hours. That was toned back now that things have been, the emergency has been declared over. But the equipment is old and needs to be replaced. So the motion tonight would allow us to do two, couple of things. One is, the second piece is to replace the server room AC units, which that was the need for our failure in December when we had to close school because the server room heated to a, over a hundred degrees and the equipment a hundred and forty degrees. And then also replace our worst units. The committee had asked that we take another step and say, what if we were to replace everything and do it all at once? It's going to take the engineers from train to do some analysis and it takes some time because we wanted to take some steps to do that. But we understand, all right, if, if, if interest rates are favorable, do we do it all now? But we're going to need till November, December to do that. So this motion would allow us to reimburse ourselves from a bond that we would issue and we have time to be able to do it. It doesn't mean if we go and we expend the funds, that means we have to do it with, we have to bond within the next couple of weeks. We have time, but we, we want to get Beaver Meadow at least on the docket. So Broken Ground and Beaver Meadow will be taken care of next summer and then we would look at the high school in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So, Mr. Dunn, you're, when you talk about that motion, we're talking about the motion on page twenty-six, that is the declaration of official intent of Concord School District, New Hampshire, to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness? Okay, I just want to make that clear for the board. Since, since this is a, since this is a motion to bond, I would ask that we consider it after public comment, as far as a vote. But does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Dunn or for the members of the finance committee? Go ahead.
Just some clarification, so I'm understanding correctly. Moving forward on this would mean that Beaver Meadow and Broken Ground schools, their HVAC systems are being taken care of next summer. And we would be moving into replacing four to six units at the high school level the following summer. Is that correct?
Timing wise, Mr. Cashman, is that correct?
Hold on, go ahead, Jack.
Yep, no, if we were going to do the high school partial, that would happen next summer as well. If we do the whole high school, we'd have to wait till twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And since the board has asked us for, I'm sorry, the committee has asked us for a plan to do the whole thing, again, if we wind up delaying that, that's fine, but at least we've started the process. And that just means the bond overall will be rolled, everything will get rolled into that in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Dunn or Mr. Cashman, my question is, what is the lead time on the equipment that we would need for this or the lead time for contracting this before we put it in? Is it, you're talking about next summer? What's the lead time on this?
Yeah, most of that reason for that lead time is because of the electrical upgrades that need to happen. The supplies, including transformers, have anywhere from forty to fifty-two week lead times for both Broken Ground and Beaver Meadow. So that is what has delayed it. HVAC, I think we're looking at thirty to forty weeks. But that's because they didn't bother because they knew once they got the electrical supply, there was no way it was going to happen in the summer. So that's why it's next summer.
Okay. And this would, Ms. Cashman, this question's for you. This would bring our Broken Ground and Beaver Meadow schools to the same HVAC quality, air quality as our new, well, now ten-year-old.
Correct. It'd be dehumidified air. So in the three newer elementary schools, that's the systems that we have in there. So when you, you know, good example, you go through Millbrook School and then you walk through the breezeway, if you will, the connector part and you walk into Broken Ground, Ms. Finkley's back there. And you, you definitely can tell the difference. So we're, we don't take the humidity out of the air right now currently at Broken Ground or Beaver Meadow. We're just simply filtering the air and bringing outside ambient air into the school. This would be different. We would dehumidify it and bring in cooler air.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Mink.
I apologize if I missed this. In the declaration of intent, it only mentions Beaver Meadow School, but are we talking about Broken Ground as well, as part of this fund?
Broken Ground is paid for by Acer.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you, thank you. I was like, I know we're talking about them.
I was going to say, the funding is different, but the project is similar. Other questions? All right, then, thank you, Mr. Dunn, and we will bring this up immediately after public comment.
Do we need to have a roll call on a declaration on this type of?
On a bond, I would.
I would, I would call for a roll call. Any one of the members of this board may call for a roll call at any time, and I would just call for a roll call. But, once again, does anyone have an objection to bringing this up after public comment? No? Okay. Anything else?
I don't know.
No, that's.
It's an awful lot for July, but we're, I'm happy with that.
Okay. All right. So, then, then we will move on to item number seven, which is public comment. Can I just get a show of hands of people who would be interested in public comment tonight? Okay, so that's, that's not too many. We can, we can easily accommodate that. We ask that you have, take, you know, limit your comments to about five minutes. And we ask also that you would please sign in with, on the sheet that is right there on that table directly in front of me. And whoever would like to go first, please? Sheet right there.
Do I have to do that before I speak, or can I wait until I can speak?
Whichever is most convenient for you, sir.
Yes, most convenient. My name is Steve Mike Lovitz. I live at 47 South Curtisville Road in Concord, and have lived happily there for the last 14 years next to the school, except for a period of time of about 7:20 to 7:45 in the morning, and about 2:10 to 2:30 in the afternoon. And I would like to appreciate the comments. This is Ms. Meyer?
Meker.
Meker, I'm sorry, who stated that for people hearing all of this for the first time, it would behoove everybody to try to get a timeline and some information down. The problem is, we're not hearing it for the first time. We're hearing a lot of it on the street. And a lot of it is misinformation, and a lot of it is twisted information. And, you know, I swore I was not going to get involved in board meetings, having spent 40 years in education, but as a former middle school principal, I'm very interested in this whole operation that's going on. And one of the comments that I have is, is your timeline based on the fact that you are number one in line for the next fiscal year, or are your, is your timeline dedicated to the exploration of the alternative sites and some of the other issues surrounding why runlet would not be an appropriate site, for example? I've heard the arguments, and again, on the street sometimes, that there are not enough athletic fields. And I would just ask that these kinds of comments and some of the others be put in some kind of historical perspective, so that as your thought goes forward and your decisions are made, that we as the public can have some kind of a timeline as to how these decisions are made and on what rational basis they are made, failing any public comment to this point. And because we can't as a public have an informed discussion without that kind of information with you. Rather than trying to glean all of this information from various agendas and snippets of information, and try to put it together as a, as a public citizen, it would be much more beneficial if your thinking could be documented for your own history and everything else, so that we could have a synopsis of events as they occur and are occurring, so that as we come to these public hearings, we can use that information to inform our discussion with you. And that's my comment.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Please, come on.
I am Claire Mike Lovitz, Steve's wife, also resident of 47 South Curtisville Road.
Can I ask you just to pull the microphone a little closer, so that people at home are sure to hear you?
We live at 47 South Curtisville Road, next to Broken Ground School. And before I make my comments, I just wanted to say, we have very high regard for the Concord School system. We have three granddaughters who have all graduated from Concord High, the third one this year, and we have a grandson who is at Millbrook. I enjoy volunteering at both schools. I'm a retired teacher, taught in Vermont for quite a few years. So, with that said, I do have some very, very strong concerns about the traffic issues on South Curtisville Road. So, when we sort of heard through the grapevine about the school-owned property being considered as a possible site, I was talking with Brenda Hastings, and she said, yes, it's definitely one of the considerations. We haven't made a decision, and she urged me to come to the meetings, gave me the dates, whatever. So, just as an example, in the morning, the traffic is lined up almost out to East Side Drive. Some of the cars are waiting patiently, others try to create a third lane of traffic so that they can get into the school a little bit faster. Once they drop the children off, they fly back up South Curtisville Road, and I'm very concerned about the safety of the children. Our house sits back quite a ways from the road, so it's not a personal concern that the traffic's bothering me or anything like that. But I'm often out there before and after school, and I see what's going on. There's also a major problem at the four-way stop sign, the intersection of Portsmouth Street and South Curtisville. We were hit there this winter. Fortunately, no one was hurt, but we had major damage to our car. And in conversations with folks involved in city engineering and with the police department, they share the same concerns about the traffic. They've been down there looking at the situation. There've been other accidents in addition to ours, and I don't know what the access would be if that site was to be chosen. Our daughter lives on North Curtisville Road, and I know there's been some talk about opening the end of North Curtisville, which I guess at one time, the roads were connected. So, I would just urge you to possibly talk with the city engineering folks and the police department, and get a little feedback from them. I know some people can't even get out of Dominique Drive in the morning, because the people lined up to drop off their kids, wouldn't even leave space for the cars to come out of, of Dominique. So, that's just a little feedback from me. Like I said, my major concern is safety, and I would hope that whatever site is chosen, that the traffic patterns are given, you know, strict consideration, and a number of security folks, be it police officer, that someone is monitoring the traffic situation a little more carefully. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Ellen Kenny, and I am the ELL teacher at the Broken Ground School. I'm also a resident of Concord. And in addition to the amount of time I spend in the classroom, I think I probably spend close to an equal amount of that, of my time in the Broken Ground Woods. I, first, before I say anything more, I want to thank you so much for everything that you do, and I think you are all unsung heroes, and this is a hard and extremely time-consuming job. When, I feel like I'm a fairly good consumer of community information, but Claire, back there, was my grapevine as to the fact that there was a plan for the middle school in the Broken Ground area. And I have to say, I was shocked, obviously. I have not been reading the, the newspapers carefully enough, or maybe this information isn't out there to the extent that it needs to be. So, I want to thank you, those of you who said that maybe the timeline could be increased, so that there is more public awareness. I feel very strongly about the green space being, in Concord, being one of the real selling points that we have as a community. And I think that people that come to this city really appreciate the fact that you could be downtown, and then with, within just a very short period of time, on your bike, or by foot, or by car, you have access to so many beautiful wild spaces. So, this is just coming from my passion as somebody who has always spent time in the woods, that when I hear about these 54 acres, what I think about is the habitat loss. I'm just one person, but I know that there are many people that I know that would feel very strongly about this. And I know all of you are in a blind where you have one small site, and then you own these acres, but I just wanted to make that comment, and thank you very much. And while I'm here, I'll apologize to Mr. Cashman for the number of times I've set off the alarm at Broken Ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I'm sure Mr. Cashman is okay with it.
He's used to it.
Yeah.
Happens all the time.
Thanks, Ellen.
Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Dennis Casey. I've been a Concord resident for just under three years now. Moved from a small school district out in the southwest of Cooperative District, lived there for 41 years, and thought I'd see what it's like at a city district. But I guess I'm the designated representative of the non-education professional educators from the community. I think I wanted to make a point about your comparison of the two sites that you're considering. One is large, but it's got two schools on it. Another one is small, but has one school on it, and will have one school on it if it's chosen. So, it almost seems to me that it's kind of a even, maybe not exactly even, but I, that might be something that, that people will say, well, it's too small, and this one is big, but, you know. So, that's one of the points that I wanted to make. The other thing I was, I know I was looking on the, the website, the page for the middle school, and I noticed there's a lot of what I would, I guess I would call schematic drawings of, assuming this is the existing middle school, not plans for a new school, right, that's showing all these things. I mean, it's, I was looking at them today, and, and I don't.
Is it okay to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
That is work that we had done for a new middle school. And at the, and at the
time, that was for the existing location, or that Clinton Street property that we had looked at. So, those schematic designs, and I'd be happy to go over them with you, those are for a new.
Okay, so those, those are conceptual, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Obviously, nobody's dimensioning anything yet.
Not quite yet.
And when you look at those, the way they're oriented on the page, are we looking at a north-south orientation kind of thing, or is it, is it based on the, where the street, front of the street is?
So, I would like to take the time to look at it with you, because I want to make sure of all the plans that you could be looking at. I want to answer correctly to you, so I want to see what orientation you're looking at.
Well, one of my questions was going to be if I could make an appointment to go over some of these things with you, because I do have a lot of questions, and, you know, this way, maybe I'd have a better handle on what's going on, because I, and I know that there's this contingent of the citizenry that is in favor of the, what they call the rebuild runlet. And I understand, having a little bit of experience with this kind of stuff, the logistical issues with doing that. You build new, you move, you tear down, then you build, and on and on it goes, and it's, it's quite a management problem. But I was just wondering if that's, if that's something that you've taken off the table, or are you still considering possibly going that route?
Nothing's off the table.
I was going to say, neither of the sites are off the table.
So, we got to collect all those signs, because there's no point in having them out there anymore. All right, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you.
We appreciate your coming down and commenting.
And everyone should come back in August.
Or September.
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 Whenever we set it up. They can come back at our August meeting, too. Yeah, Sarah, you're exactly right, Mr. Weinberg. Everybody is welcome for comment during our August board meeting. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment this evening? All right.
Mr. Casey, could I ask you if you're in the Navy? Were you in the Navy?
You could ask. I was, but it's so long ago, I, I had trouble believing it was real.
Just want you to know that Mr. Cashman is also a Navy man, so.
You know, it's so long ago.
We're on, good. I do want to thank everyone who took the time to make the comments this evening. The board really appreciates all of the public input that we can get. It's a big decision, and we appreciate everyone's input. Go ahead.
Just Mr. Casey mentioned it, and I think Mr. Markovitz?
Michael.
Michael, sorry, had asked about, there is a link on the SAU website that has a lot of history about the district's thinking on the middle school project, and the current site, and what people are hoping for out of a new middle school. There, it's a lot of information, because this has been going on a really, really long time. So, you know, for people who have questions about the past, that might be a good place to look.
When I retired 13 years ago, I turned off my internet and had.
Well, maybe you need to make an appointment with Mr. Cashman.
Mr. Cashman will be happy to answer your question.
Let me write down my number.
Well, thank you, everyone. And with that, I will close the public comment period, and we will move on to item number eight, personnel.
Do we need to go back and vote?
Oh, we do have to vote. I'm sorry, we wanted to vote right after public comment with regards to the bond questions.
I will move the declaration of intent to bond.
Second. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded with the declaration to bond. Do we want to read the bond declaration, so that everyone knows? It's in the, it is in our packet. It's in, it's on our website for anyone who wants, of the public who wants to see it. And let me see, it's a declaration to bond for?
26.
Up to $5 million.
$5 million.
So, I think you might want to mention that.
I will move the declaration of intent to bond for up to $5 million.
And seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Is there any discussion? I will just clarify that it's, this is for the intent to, for HVAC work at the Beaver Meadow School and the high school. These projects will be done in concurrent with the Broken Ground School work that is already planned. Any other questions or discussion?
I think it's important, we heard it from Jack, but it's important to say it over again, that these things are costing our district money all the time right now, because they're so old. And so, it would be, it wouldn't be a great decision for us to not do this.
Other comments? I will also mention that, Mr. Crotto, you're exactly right, but also that a catastrophic failure of the units because they're so old, especially in the winter, would cause a great disruption to the elementary school, or to the high schools involved, the high school involved. Other comments or questions? All right, not seeing any. I will ask for a roll call vote for this particular item, since it is a financial item. The bond?
Mr. Weinberg.
Aye.
Ms. Hastings, well, Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Mr. Crotto.
Aye.
Mr. Cotton.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Meeker.
Aye.
Mr. Richards.
Aye.
And I vote aye, eight to nothing.
Okay, the intent to bond has passed. Now, we are ready to move on to personnel, right? I don't have anybody else has any, and the things that I've left out. Very good, I appreciate that.
You gonna do a little dance factor?
All right, we have some anxious people for the personnel section of this meeting. Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I'm gonna, I am absolutely gonna place Michael McLeod's name in for nomination. Michael's been sitting patiently with Principal Scapati, and I think it's a testament to his perseverance through our board meetings, right? So, thank you, Michael, but it is a, yeah, I know, but it is a pleasure, and I feel like he'll be a real, he'll be a wonderful contribution at Millbrook.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Weinberg, and seconded by Ms. Higgins, to approve of Mr. Michael McLeod as the assistant principal at Millbrook. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Welcome, Mr. McLeod. Please continue, Superintendent.
Thank you, and again, it's a pleasure for me to nominate Brittany Mahaney as the assistant principal for Beaver Meadow School. Again, great, great recommendations from the folks in Nashua that we spoke to, including her superintendent, so it's a pleasure to put her name into nomination.
Very good. Do I have a motion on Ms. Mahaney?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Robinson, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Crotto. Is there any discussion? All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, welcome, Ms. Mahaney. Please continue, Superintendent.
And lastly, tonight, to nominate Fern Sidon, Fern comes to us from Merrimack, but, you know, she has a very long history of work in this field around mental health, and she has been a big part of the trauma training that was done in the state. And I think that she'll do a great job with us, given all of her experiences and background. So it's a pleasure to nominate Fern Sidon for the position of director for student wellness and staff wellness.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on Ms. Sidon's nomination?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Higgins, is there a second?
Second. That was Ms. Robinson.
Seconded by Ms. Robinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion passes, welcome, Ms. Sidon.
And I will turn it over to Michelle Garry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we do have a leave of absence request, apparently you got it twice, but we do have a leave of absence request for an educator at Beaver Meadow who's requesting the year leave of absence.
We have a, is, sorry, it's confidential, is that a non-public conversation, or?
Depending on what kind of detail we get into with regards to that, this is a request for unpaid leave.
No questions, no questions.
So moved.
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Weinberg, and seconded by Ms. Robinson. I believe everybody's had a chance to read their note, is there any discussion? And if it is in detail, we will have to go into non-public. Not seeing any. All those in favor, please signify, approving the leave of absence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Okay, we do have a existing teacher confirmation for Ashley DeVoe for the preschool position at Abbott Downing.
Okay, that's in our board bookend, page 29. I will make a motion to accept the nomination of Ashley DeVoe for Abbott Downing School. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, welcome, Ms. Mahaney.
Okay, and for some new teachers, we do have five educators that are being brought forward for positions, two at the high school, two at Runlet, and one at Cresta McCullough.
Okay.
They are on pages 30 and 31.
Moved by Mr. Cotton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Robinson, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I mean, no.
Okay. That's a, one opposed.
Okay.
One opposed. And any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Yes, we're moving on to a coach nomination, I believe?
Correct, we do have a nomination for a girl JV soccer coach for the fall season at the high school.
Okay.
Page 32.
Page 32, page salmon for the girls' high school JV soccer coach. So moved, all right, moved by Ms. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Weinberg, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
The superintendent did ask me if I would just provide you with a brief update on the hiring status and where we're at for this upcoming school year.
Please do.
And I'm happy to say that we are doing very, very well, and we are down to first certified positions, and we have two at the high school. We are looking for a halftime art teacher and a .6 English teacher at this time. There are three in process that we'll be scheduling interviews with the superintendent this week, so there's three that we're hoping will be filled by the end of the week. Runlet is down to a speech-language pathologist position. And we have, well, a now just approved leave of absence position at special ed for Beaver Meadow, and we are anticipating a resignation for a kindergarten teacher at Abbott Downing, and that will fill our certified teaching positions for the school year.
Very good.
Well done.
Yes, nice to, nice to see that number be so low. All right, thank you, Ms. Garry. Next is instructional committee, who will be handling this report?
Where's the tan?
Ms. Robinson and myself.
Wow, very good. Whichever of you would like to go first.
I could, I could, I could start. So we discussed some new competencies, as you've seen with the theme with the instructional committee, we're just bringing more and more competencies for people to discuss. At the last meeting, it was Castle, which, let me, I got the website up, collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, some of the five tenants, Sarah, if you're on the page, you're welcome to hop in at any time. We focused on, were self-awareness, oh, thank you, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness, and each of these are part of the competencies that are designed to assist students in becoming connected, engaged, and inspired learners.
I think what was really great about the presentation on these competencies is that it will create a common language around SEL for each of the schools, for the entire district, so there will be uniformity in how SEL is approached from a language and vocabulary standpoint, but each of the schools will, of course, be tailoring that curriculum for the populations that they experience within those specific communities. So, it looks like a really great program, I'm always grateful to see continuity across all of the elementary schools. So, yeah, we all very enthusiastically appreciated the presentation, looks like great programming, we all need more social-emotional learning in all of our spaces, adults included, so highly recommend the approval of the Castle efforts.
And we discussed kind of an evolution of some of the software and products that the district is using to evaluate, and looking through how these programs can be most effective. And I believe there is a motion.
It's in your minutes.
It's in the minutes, that's what I thought.
Yep, go to your minutes.
At the bottom, for the board to adopt the Castle competencies as recommended by the SEL and instructional committees for the 2023-24 school year, and it comes with the endorsement of the instructional committee.
So I take it, Mr. Weinberg, you're making that motion?
I will indeed make that motion.
Is there a second?
I would happily.
Oh, go ahead, I'll second it, I couldn't go to the meeting, track him. Anyway, so...
Swimming camp.
Yeah, swimming camp, not that week, that week was sunny. But, all of the work, all of this work is wonderful, and I would love to point out that our new wellness coordinator has extensive experience in Castle, so it's such a great, yeah, it brings me a lot of relief, just as an educator, trauma specialist around this kind of stuff for our kids. So this is a good thing.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Crotto?
I have a question, maybe for Kim. How do you see this, these things being actually taught, presented to our kids?
So the committee, which began before I was here, has already done a lot of work looking at sort of a developmental range of skills from pre-K all the way up to 12, and how those skills might be benchmarked. One of the recommendations from Castle is that you don't over-assess these skills with students, because it brings up equity issues and biases. However, this, we, we're working on a new report card just today, and have, with this proposal being passed, we'll adopt these into the report card, and then look at subset of skills that are observed, but not overly assessed.
So, they're not going to be taught in isolation?
Absolutely not.
It'll be in process, but some sort of benchmarks to document that it's been done in?
Well, currently, the lower elementary schools each have a different program, which is the instructional program that they're using. These competencies will act as an overarching guide to, you know, K through 12, that we're all saying that we value these, we value these, and the subset of skills that fall under them. So, for example, social awareness would be, you know, we want students to get along with one another, so we might be looking at and determining how well students work cooperatively in groups, so that would be a really small example. Within each of these instructional programs that the schools have adopted, or one at Beaver Meadow is piloting, there are also some benchmarks for determining students' abilities to do certain skills. So, the next step is to look, just as we did with the math and the social studies, we did the overarching competencies, the next step is to look at the sub-skills and look at which ones we would want to assess, or at least provide feedback to parents on. And again, that's going to be in the charge of this, the SEL committee for next steps.
So they, I mean, it's, it's great that you're doing work on the report cards at this point, and that you can kind of blend some of these things together, right? I mean, otherwise, how do we document where kids are, and what they're doing with regard to these competencies? Okay. Be interested to hear more as we move through.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
Could you elaborate what you mean by the elementary schools are using different programs?
Sure, I can't do them much, yeah, there isn't an SEL curriculum, which is why we want this to be the curriculum. There are programs, and there's lots of different programs that are out there, for example, PBIS, responsive classroom, Second Step, Fly Five is a new program that's out that Beaver Meadow is using, there's Choose Love, have I forgotten any?
I think you've got lost.
I think I got one. Love is, love is something, life is good or something, yeah, life is good. So they're, they all, on their own, have become very wedded to different instructional programs, and they've kind of become the culture of the school. You know, there's signs everywhere that are showing the language that we use to maybe redirect students, or language we use to give feedback about how they're doing walking down the hallways, or whatever, different small components. A goal down the road would be for us to be aligned, because you have to remember that these five schools are feeder schools into Runlet. And while many of them share common threads, common themes, these competencies will help just bring the umbrella of this is what we want, and now we can measure those programs up against the Castle competencies. Thank you.
That's exactly where I was going.
Very good, other questions? Ms. Meeker, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say, is there like a home kit for these competencies? Get my kid to sit at the table? Just kidding, Evelyn, I love you.
To jump on that, for more information about each of these competencies, I would recommend looking through the instructional committee materials, because we got a boatload of items that aren't included.
Is it all posted on?
They're all posted online, I believe, as well.
Yeah, and the Castle website has a really great introductory video that we got to watch, that sort of showed, you know, like what their, what their competencies look like, how they can be, sort of gave examples of how that can be seen in the classroom, really helpful for parents to be able to see that, so that they kind of know, get like a good baseline of what the expectations are. It was really a very thorough presentation, very great report.
And I can just jump in quick, too, and say that the Castle website is pretty immense, too, and a lot of these videos, and very short clips, and very understandable things for parents and families are right on the Castle website, so I think that I would also recommend that, and it's, you know, nationally done and normed, and they look at, they evaluate programs, as we talked about, in different buildings, and they have lists of those, it's very, very, very well done, and it is a good, as Kim said, an overarching competency-based approach, looking at what are our, what are our overall big ideas for kids that we want them to get to, and then we can evaluate against them.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? All right, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the Castle competencies. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. And now, before, since Mr. Weinberg alluded to it, and I was, you know, definitely reminded of our need to approve the monthly meeting minutes of the instructional board, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved, seconded? I'll second it.
I'm so glad I reminded you.
Thank you. You reminded me of the instructional committee. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are approved, and since in that same vein, we neglected to approve the finance committee meeting minutes of June 26, is there a motion to approve the finance committee? So moved.
The whole committee moved it.
I was gonna say, it's a very unified committee, Ms... All right, so...
All should just do it together.
Thank you very much, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved as well, so thank you, Ms. Walsh, for keeping me on track, and Mr. Weinberg for reminding me. Now we get to go into the communication policy, so Mr. Cotton? I know you all anxiously are waiting for this. First thing I'd like to do is ask for a motion to approve the monthly meeting minutes. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Higgins. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting minutes are approved. Please proceed, Mr. Cotton. So, with those approved minutes, hopefully you have a chance to actually read those minutes, because it kind of gives you the roadmap of what we did to the various policies that we reviewed at the last meeting. And I will just mention to you again that policy 462 and 890, items E and F on the agenda, we're gonna not talk about those tonight, bring them up again next time.
we're gonna not talk about those tonight and bring them up again the next time. Um, so the first one that we talked about was policy number two sixteen. That involves, uh, the absence of the superintendent. Um, uh, and actually, they brought that into the administrative succession plan, uh, for either, uh, for a possible permanent change of leadership with the superintendent. That is now up for a second reading. I'm happy to answer your questions about that. Otherwise, I'd like to move that we adopt policy number two sixteen.
Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh. Discussion on policy two sixteen, the administrative succession plan? Any questions? Everybody's had, those of us on the committee have had a chance to read it many times. Um, all right, very good. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion passes. Please proceed.
Okay, the next one is, uh, policy number five twelve. We managed to take a policy that was for long and short of, uh, three days.
It's often the other way around.
Along the short of it still is, is that, uh, entrance age for kindergarten is, uh, honored before September thirtieth. Um, and then we did some other things to, uh, make, make some possible exceptions, et cetera. Uh, you can find that policy on page fifty-four. And again, that's for second reading, and I'd like to move adoption of policy five twelve.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Higgins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Okay, moving on to policy five twenty-nine point one. Um, that can be found on page fifty-six through fifty-eight. Um, and that is for a second reading. Uh, there are no, or even if there are questions on that, I'll, I'll move that we adopt, um, education for children in foster care, section, their policy number five twenty-nine point one.
Motion has been made, Mr. Cotton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crotto. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? The motion passes, thank you.
Okay, um, skipping over the next two, we move on to policy five seventy-six and policy number seven ninety. Um, both of those deal with, uh, animals in school. Service animals, um, are, um, policy five seventy-six, and therapy dogs are policy seven ninety. Um, there is a distinction between, uh, service animals and therapy dogs. I'll let you read what those differences are for yourself. Both of those are, uh, presented to you tonight for a first reading.
Excuse me, Bob, could you pull the microphone closer? We're getting a message that some people can't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Anyway, uh, policy five seventy-six and seven ninety are, are dealing with service animals in schools and therapy dogs. Both of those policies are for a first reading tonight, so we won't be taking action to adopt them. Are there any questions on those two policies?
I don't have a question, I just, I gotta tell you that the specificity in those is tremendous. And it's just gonna be very helpful to principal or superintendent or anyone in charge who is presented with, why can't I bring my board constrictor to the school?
I was just thinking the same thing.
You know, I mean, I, I don't mean to make light of any of it, but the specificity here is gonna be very helpful, and I appreciate that, thank you.
You can potentially bring your miniature horse.
Of course. I know.
As a service animal.
We also ran this by, uh, Primex because it's our insurance carrier, because obviously that's an important element to this too.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cotton or the committee? Go ahead, Ms. Neaker.
I will just say that, um, for anybody looking at the packet that might be confused about red text versus highlighted text versus gray text, um, I'm on the committee and I'm also confused. So, uh, I think when we get to second reading, hopefully the packet would include the original language stated plainly, and then what is being changed stated plainly so that we can be clear on what we're voting on. For these particular policies, the language is changing pretty minimally, and we did look at it, and we did approve those language changes. But if you're just reading this for the first time, it might be a little difficult to note what the changes are. So I'd like to commit as a committee to making that very clear for everyone moving forward.
Okay, so, uh, without, without objection, we will direct the communication and policy committee to just, uh, outline what the, uh, changes in color and highlighting designate as we come to second reading. Does anyone have any objections to that? All right, so the committee is so directed. Um, Mr. Cotton, do you have anything else for us to do?
No, that'll do it.
Thank you very much. So, uh, with that, we will move on to item number twelve, which is subcommittees. The only one we have listed is a sustainability committee. Uh, Mr. Weinberg, are you presenting this one to the committee?
There, there aren't too many updates. We met two weeks ago and discussed how Concord is creating its own community power, um, entity, which will provide an alternative to unitil and other energy prices. That has done the works, it's not, you, you probably won't be seeing that soon, but maybe shortly. And I imagine there will be a conversation with the district about participating or what the district would like to do in the future as well. That was probably the most relevant conversation in addition to electric vehicle conversion and, um, charging stations as well, which I know has been a topic that we've discussed for the past couple of years, and looking at what grants and opportunities are available.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Weinberg? Oh, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we move on to other business, monthly enrollment.
Um, just real quick, um, you can look at, it's, it's on page seventy-one. We, you can see we went to the end of June and we're starting a new one, but we left the original from last year in there, so you could see it. But what the numbers were as of July, I mean, the, not much has changed, uh, at all, actually. So you've seen a few, we've probably seen a few withdrawals that happen over the summer. And as you know, we're registering youngsters, um, all the time in schools. Um, and, um, so we'll see those numbers change, but just wanted to keep it in, in front of you. Um, same with the second page, seventy-two, same thing. You won't see much change because summertime.
Okay.
Really not much.
Any questions for the superintendent, health of student enrollment? Well, thank you very much. Superintendent, with that, we'll move on to the calendar.
Uh, we have two months in your calendar, July, we're already in the second week. Um, we tentatively have a meeting on the twelfth with negotiations. I will keep that, the committee aware of where we're at and whether we need that meeting or not. So, um, um, we're, we've got a couple of things in the works, and so maybe we will, but I'm not sure. So I know it's last minute, but we're still, as you know, uh, working with our educational associates, uh, for their contract for this year. So, um, uh, I'll keep you posted. Uh, next week, uh, you have a non-public for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation. Uh, and then at the end of the month, executive committee and communication and policy on the thirty-first.
Just a question on that, when we, at our last meeting.
Did we change that date?
We took the thirty-first off and just decided to move, it's the second to last paragraph on page forty-three to five, actually. Thirty-first off and just gonna have it on August twenty-third is what we were talking about.
Well, the problem with the August twenty-third date, I think that's probably, is that's the back-to-school night.
We could move it to some other night.
All right, so you want to remove it from the thirty-first?
Well, actually, you got it on the sixteenth.
We have one on the sixteenth.
So we could use that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll remove that one. But other than that, that's all we have, um, for formal board meetings, posted meetings. Uh, in August, uh, you can see we'll start off, Matt mentioned it earlier, with the capital facilities on the second of August. Following week is your regular school board meeting, and the three dates that I have on your, in your calendar and highlighted, our retreat, that's administrative retreat. We have thirty of our administrators in retreat and preparing for the opening, working on goals and looking at data. And we have, um, we're also working on, um, some training for our staff, trying to, um, work on teacher evaluations and those skills involved with that. So we have a PD, uh, on one of the days for them, so, um, just wanted to keep you in the loop on that. Uh, I will send you an agenda, we're just about finished with the agenda, and I'll make sure you have a copy of it. Um, the following week, finance and instructional, uh, with.
Ask a question on, only a half hour for finance, is that all we need?
I think we might need more given the questions we have from the last meeting.
Can we move that back? Okay, we, well, let's, let's play with that. Kim wants to talk to me a little bit about instructional committee, so maybe we can move that, uh, to another session, although it's getting close, maybe the twenty-eighth. We could move instructional to the twenty-eighth?
Of August?
Uh-huh. Even though, I mean, teacher work day, that's the first day back for, um, for teachers, but that doesn't prevent you from meeting. So why don't we move the instructional committee to the twenty-eighth and leave the finance committee at five-thirty? How's that? Does that work? Okay. Um, policy on the sixteenth, um, the following week, executive committee and city and community relations. Uh, back-to-school night at Keach Park, which is a great night. Um, you've done that in the past. Um, I think you've been involved with, um, making sure everybody got their lunch or their dinner, whatever, and, um, so that's kind of a fun night. First day of school, I believe I've just got out, but, um, first day of school is, uh, on August thirtieth. Good? Question?
Does this, go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
Um, just to add in, uh, one more date, the, uh, Saturday, July twenty-second will be the next, uh, school board visibility down by the farmer's market. Um, we missed one date because I did not send out an email, so I'll be on top of it. July twenty-second.
I have your table.
Nine to noon. You can go right from there to Keach Park. Gladly.
Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Uh, just given our earlier discussion about, uh, possible sites for a middle school, we need to put that in someplace.
We should probably discuss, we had talked about August or September, but we also discussed and heard some requests for more than one. Uh, I don't have the September ca, calendar in front of me.
Well, what, but what I heard, um, Jim, is that, um, the board wanted to have a presentation first in August. And then we would have two sessions, like a Zoom meeting and a public person-to-person session in September. That's what I heard.
Uh, okay, yeah, that's, I mean, I knew we wanted to get the information out first.
So.
Could we do a joint finance and capital facilities on the fourteenth?
That might be a great night to do that.
That works for the second.
That'd be a good idea, yeah.
But I'm still gonna hold the second with a capital facilities also because we haven't invited Amy Clark to do a presentation to you. So we'll, if, if that's okay, we'll do two.
So that'll be on the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then the fourteenth will be finance and, again, capital facilities.
Because we also, I mean, finance talks a lot about the middle school, so we should, uh, the high school.
Okay, I'll make those corrections.
The fourteenth, however, I, let me just, let me just throw something else out there. Is that a, is that a finance and capital facilities meeting, or is that a full board meeting? Does the whole board want to get the information associated with the middle school?
Well, at that point, are we all on the committees?
No, I'm not on this one.
Well, half the committees are the same, I think.
Yeah, I think it's, it doesn't.
I think you get five people when you get put finance and capital facilities.
Five out of nine, yeah. So, so do we want to instead?
Have a special board meeting?
Yeah.
We'll just have a special board meeting?
And those will be the topics, finance and capital facilities, okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right. So I'll call that a full board meeting.
And that's on the fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
What time, five-thirty?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Good?
Having.
Yeah.
Having said that, you will be.
All right.
Chair that.
I said, having said that, she'll be chairing that meeting as I will be out of town. So, um.
That's all I have.
All right, I don't see any further public comment. Um, and we've already, we've given everybody the option for that all, as well, so.
For September dates, can we make sure we're coordinating that we're not doing it on back-to-school nights or athletic nights?
Right, I will, I'll work on, it's, it's not easy, but I will.
There's not a lot of dates, but.
We, we actually put that calendar into the retreat folder around all the dates, like, like, um, the Jewish holidays and so forth, so we know that we don't.
Yeah, can you please, when we get our September calendar, please include that? We will have to include at some point probably the second week of September when we have candidate, it's usually like the second week when we have a candidate forum?
Yeah.
Or a candidate informational session?
Who's up?
We have three, um, seats that are up.
The three zones are, um, so that's, uh, that has to be planned. We're gonna have a fairly easy September calendar, I believe.
As it always is.
And Brenda, and Mr. Bruno.
Very good. Uh, any other?
Wow, I forgot about that.
Concerns, calendar loss? All right, do we have a need for a non-public session?
Yes, we do.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to move into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one A colon three, section two A, and RSA ninety-one A colon three, section two D. And do we need the G?
No.
No. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, as soon as you're ready, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Weinberg?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Mr. Crotto?
Aye.
Mr. Cotton?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Neaker?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
And I vote aye, eight to nothing.
All right, we're in a non-public session. We will come out of this, and I do not anticipate any further business, so we will cease our broadcast at this point or because we will simply adjourn afterwards. And then we'll take a recess for two minutes. Thank you, everyone.